I'd like to welcome everybody. Welcome to the Economic Development Authority Meeting. I'm going to call the meeting to order. This is the meeting of the Economic Development Authority. And Kim, can you please take roll call?
Yes, I can. Commissioner Dumalag?
Here.
Commissioner Broson?
Present.
Commissioner Bowden?
Here.
President Budd?
Here. All right, we have a pretty light agenda on our EDA agenda tonight. The first thing is to approve the agenda. Do I have a motion to approve the agenda?
Move approval.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, the agenda is approved. Item three on the agenda is the minutes from our July 7th EDA meeting. Do I have a motion to approve those minutes?
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. I did want to make a comment on those minutes, that the meeting started at 6:05 and ended at 6:07. We'll see if we can compete with that tonight. All those in favor of approving the minutes?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The minutes from July 7th are approved. There is one consent item, which is to approve the disbursements for the month. Do I have a motion to approve that?
I'd move approval. It seems like $40,000 well spent.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, the disbursements or the consent agenda is approved. There are no public hearings as part of the EDA meeting. There is no regular business, no communications or announcements. So the EDA meeting is adjourned. The council meeting will begin at 6:15. Thank you.
That was two minutes. President.
All right, folks, we will get started on our city council meeting. It is now 6:15. Kim, roll call, please.
Councilmember Bowden?
Here.
Councilmember Broson?
Happily here.
Councilmember Budd?
Here.
Councilmember Dumalag?
Here.
Mayor Mohammed?
Here. Moving on to the approval of the agenda, actually, let's do our Pledge of Allegiance. Yeah, can't forget that. All right, please join me if you can and are able to. All right, moving on to the approval of the agenda. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
All right.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion? All right, seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? All right, the agenda is approved. Now getting to the part where most of you guys are here for. This is the exciting part where we recognize the leaders in our community, our junior playground leaders. And so every year we have an opportunity to highlight the amazing work that they have done this past summer and to hold space for them and to congratulate them and to celebrate them. And so I'm going to ask Lisa to introduce the kids and I will come up, and I shouldn't say kids, I should say leaders, and I will present them with their recognition.
Perfect. Thank you. Well, good evening, Mayor Rahabat and council members. I'm Lisa Abernathy. I'm a recreation supervisor in our Parks and Recreation Department. I'm here today to help recognize just a few of our many junior leaders that we have out in our summer playground program, having fun and learning leadership skills along the way. This program has been around for almost 39 years in the city, and each summer it continues to grow. It's just amazing. The summer, we had 46 junior leaders who are ages 12 to 15, who are out in our parks logging over 1,900 hours of volunteer service. Junior leaders provide assistance to our paid staff, they help lead crafts, games, and then participate in the activities themselves. We value having them in our parks and our park program and strive to prepare them with the skills that they will need to become a paid leader in the future or if they choose to move on to other job opportunities. Please help me recognize their dedication to our summer program and making a difference in our participants' lives and their summer program experience. All right, we have Charlie Anniston. James Mayer. And Weston Oth.
I know that before you guys head out, I want to give council an opportunity to say a couple of words to the kids. That's okay, they can hear us.
Bye.
They said bye. But they can still, the spirit is still with us, so anything you guys would like to say?
Even though they're not here? But I just want to name that I really, it really hit me today when I was thinking about this, that how important getting engaged in your neighborhood and in your city is. And so for these students to do this at such a young age really is an important thing. And I hope somebody will pass on to them what I'm saying here about thanking them for their service, for their work, and getting engaged in their neighborhood and their city. And that's the kind of thing that can lead to all kinds of other things in the future. And so, well done and way to go serving, so.
There they are. We were just talking about y'all.
Should I do it again?
Go ahead.
No, I was just saying, I wanted you all to hear this. Getting engaged in your city and your neighborhood is some of the most noble and important work you can do in your life. It has real impact on bringing about a more positive place and a more positive world to live in. So just let that in. What you did this summer really matters, and it's a big deal. And we really appreciate you doing that and serving the kids in your neighborhood in this way. So thank you. Thank you for stepping up and doing this great work. And I hope it leads to a lifetime of serving your neighborhood and your city. So thank you.
Yep, go ahead, Councilmember Dumalag.
Thank you. And yes, thank you to all you young leaders. As someone that has a 10-year-old and sees the work that you've done and sees you all as a leader, thank you. And as Councilmember Bodman said, that this is hopefully one of the many steps that you'll take as being a community leader. And yeah, thank you so much for paying it forward.
Thank you. Councilmember?
I just wanted to say I had the opportunity to volunteer side by side with some of the leaders a month ago or so, and it was really inspiring to see how the younger kids wanted to work with the junior leaders and could relate to them much better than a councilperson being there. So it was very inspiring to see the youth leading the younger youth. So thank you for all you've done.
Yep, go ahead, Councilmember.
And I'll add my thanks to it, too. I know that some of the junior leaders in the past have been from other communities, too. If you are, thank you very much for being willing to share your time, talent, and treasures here with us. So we appreciate it. Thank you.
Goto to all of what my councilmembers have said. And I also want to thank the parents and their community and their village to raising such tremendous leaders and for the next generation of tomorrow. Thank you. And thank you for sharing their time with us. We appreciate that. All right, any others? Okay. All right, moving on to the second presentation, we have the Minnesota Association of, I should say, the Minnesota Recreation and Parks Association to present an award. Jamie Neldner, right? Is that correctly?
Close enough.
Oh, how do you say it?
Neldner.
Neldner.
Yes.
I love it. Thank you.
That is a tough act to follow.
Yes.
Congrats. It sounds like an amazing, inspiring program. Good evening, Mayor Mohammed and council. It's a pleasure to be here once again. I was here last year doing the same thing. I'm Jamie Neldner. I'm the Program Advancement Administrator with the Minneapolis Park Board. I'm also a proud member of the Minnesota Recreation and Park Association Awards Committee. It's an honor to be here to present 2024 Award of Excellence, once again, to your fabulous staff at the City of St. Louis Park. Before I do that, though, I do have to talk about the Minnesota Recreation and Park Association, or MRPA, just a wee bit. So MRPA was formed in 1937 to foster growth and development of the parks and recreation profession throughout the state of Minnesota. The Awards of Excellence is an annual MRPA program created to recognize agencies and their staff for an exemplary project or initiative that either was implemented in the previous year or received a substantial revision in the previous year. So MRPA members may nominate a project for an Award of Excellence in six different categories: administrative or management strategies, marketing and communications, parks and facilities, programming and events, sponsorships and partnerships, and finally volunteers and initiatives. Nominations received are then reviewed, evaluated, and scored by committee members like myself, with only the top-scoring nominations selected to receive Award of Excellence recognition, which is why I am here with you this evening. On behalf of MRPA and the Awards Committee, we extend our gratitude to Cindy Walsh, the Deputy City Manager, Jason West, Parks and Recreation Director, and Nikki Frederick, Recreation Superintendent, for all they do for the residents of St. Louis Park in providing excellent trails, parks, facilities, and programs. And now, it is my sincere pleasure to present this Award of Excellence for the marketing and communications category to the City of St. Louis Park for the winning project called Share Your Story Marketing Campaign, or otherwise known as hashtag My Park Memory, in collaboration with the city's communication team and multimedia producer nominated by Parks and Rec Director, Jason West. Congratulations.
Congrats. Yes, sir.
Oh, wow.
Me, too.
Kim and I were just joking that with all the awards that we receive, we have to build more cabinets. And like, we have to, and we have to take it on a roadshow, rub it all over our neighboring cities and let them know that we have the best. So thank you, appreciate that, Jamie, and apologize for butchering your name.
No worries.
I love it. Thank you. You have a great rest of your day. All right, congratulations, Jason. Congratulations, Nikki. Cindy isn't here, but, oh, Cindy is here! Congratulations. I am extremely proud of you guys, and I'm proud every single time that you guys do anything, but mostly when you guys win awards. Yeah! But thank you for all the work that you guys do. Any others? No? All right. All right, moving on to the Minnesota Association of Government Communicators Northern Lights Award Presentation. We are receiving another award, and this one is for, from the Association of Government Communicators. I want to invite John to make a verbal presentation. And so, and this is, I believe, for our communications staff, and so you have the floor.
Mayor Mohammed, thank you so much, mayor and council. I will also not take any offense to mentioning neighboring communities.
Yes.
I work in Minnetoka, but thank you for having me here this evening. My name's John Lixette, and I'm representing the Minnesota Association of Government Communicators. We're an organization made up of communications professionals that work in municipal, state, and county governments around Minnesota. I'm excited to share that the City of St. Louis Park has received not one but two awards from our organization. These awards are part of the Northern Lights competition, which recognizes outstanding work in government, education, and nonprofits communications. St. Louis Park earned two Bronze Awards this year, one in the Best Use of Humor category for the On-A-Rol Internship Recruitment Campaign, and another in the Publications category for the Parks and Recreation Activity Catalog. Let me start with the internship campaign. This was a fresh and creative approach to promoting the city's internship opportunities on social media. It used humor to highlight the playful culture among staff here in St. Louis Park. And it worked really well. 20% of applicants said that they learned about the opportunity through Instagram. According to the application that we received for the award, that's a big jump from past efforts. The, excuse me, the campaign featured two videos created by Savannah Byers, the city's social media specialist, with help from many different communication, or excuse me, from different city departments. Now, do you want me to present that first?
Yes.
We'll do that that way.
Yes.
So this is the Bronze Award here. I'm not sure. There we go.
Savannah!
Congrats. The second award. Let's move on to the Parks and Recreation Activity Catalog. This publication goes out three times a year to households in St. Louis Park. And in a recent survey, residents said that it is the main way that they learn about recreation programs. Creating each catalog is truly a team effort. Content comes from all areas of parks and recreation. It's pulled together by Stacy Volker, designed by Michael Goldberg, and copy-edited by the St. Louis Park Communications Staff. Both of these projects show, actually, let's do the award for that one. First, do the Bronze Award.
I'm going to accept it for Michael. He's not here today.
Perfect. There we go.
Do you want it? Do you want it? Oh, okay. This is good.
Both of these projects show how creativity, teamwork, and a focus on community can make a real impact. Congratulations to everyone involved. These awards are very well deserved. Thanks very much.
Congratulations. Parks and Rec, do you guys ever rest? Is there, is there, they're really. But Jackie and Savannah, congratulations. I will say, I get the opportunity to work with you guys a lot more, my talking points, all of it, anything that I'm, anytime that I'm out in the community. So I definitely do know that this deserve, I should say, this award is well deserved. And I thoroughly enjoy those tech talks and Instagram videos, so keep it up. And I'm happy that we are getting recognized. Thank you so much, John. We are just, we are extremely proud, so thank you. Council? Yeah? Okay. All right, perfect. I did not mean to, but congratulations, and thank you again, John, for coming over here. Congratulations to our community, or I should say, not community, our communications team. Thank you for all the work that you guys do. All right, without further ado, we're going to move on to the Proclamation Observing National Purple Heart Day.
It's my honor to get to read the proclamation for National Purple Heart Day 2025. Whereas National Purple Heart Day honors those who were wounded or killed in combat as active members of the United States military, and whereas the Purple Heart Medal originates from the Badge of Military Merit, given by then-General George Washington in 1782, and has evolved as a symbol of merit and sacrifice, and whereas St. Louis Park is dedicated to ensuring veterans are included in the fabric of our community and honored for their service, and whereas veterans face complex challenges after their courageous service, including but by no means limited to navigating access to veterans' benefits, experiencing post-traumatic stress, and adjusting to civilian life, and whereas the City of St. Louis Park proudly employs military members and veterans and makes concerted efforts to highlight the unique skills and experiences veterans bring to the workplace, including supporting our Military Employee Resources Group, and whereas it is important to recognize the sacrifice and courage of veterans and Purple Heart recipients, and advocating for the support and inclusion of veterans is one way to continuously honor their service, now therefore let it be known that the mayor and the city council of the City of St. Louis Park, Minnesota hereby observe National Purple Heart Day 2025 in our community.
Thank you.
Yes. Sure. I just note, as the proclamation did, it's a difficult time to be a veteran here in our country. It's difficult occasionally to access services. People deal with traumatic stress as a result of their military service, and we have to do all we can to support our veterans. So I'm glad we're taking this step, and we do have services available through the City of St. Louis Park, too, and we can assist people in accessing those services if they need it. So please feel free to contact us if you're a veteran and you're struggling in any way, shape, or form.
And I'll just kind of add to what Councilmember Broson had said. For those of us that have veterans in our lives and care about them, there are a lot of, there's an attachment to the package tonight titled "Five Reasons Federal Cuts Are Hitting Veterans Especially Hard." And I didn't realize all the ways that some of the workforce reductions and the healthcare benefits are really impacting our veterans. So I would encourage anyone that wants to know more about that to look at the package and the attachment there and become familiar with some of that, because our veterans are a very important part and a very significant part of our community that's being impacted.
Right. Thank you for reading that into our public records. Moving on to the recognition of donations, we have one donation that I would like to , we have a donation from Envent for trees to be provided, planted, and watered by Tree Trust, donating 30 trees to be planted at Wolf Park, honoring Melissa Hortman, former Speaker of the Minnesota House of Representatives, Melissa Hortman. That one of the things that was that, in her memory and in honor of her, I'm extremely happy to know that.
Oh, I think my mic was off, huh? Yikes. Okay. The donation was, I will repeat that just because I feel like it's important. My mic was off, and we have one donation from Envent for trees to be provided, planted, and watered by Tree Trust. And we are planting 30 trees in Wolf Park, and this is in honor of Representative, former House Speaker, I should say, Melissa Hortman and her husband, Mark Hortman. And so one of the things that her beloved family and her children asked for is that in honor of her and in her memory, that trees be planted. And if you were trying to honor her, that'd be one of the ways. And I'm extremely proud that we are partaking that and that we are planting those trees. Thank you, Tree Trust, for their donations, and I look forward to visiting. And I know council here is looking forward to visiting those trees once they're planted. All right. Any others? Yep, go ahead, Councilmember.
And thank you, and thank you, Envent. And Envent is a business, I believe, in Ward 4. So St. Louis Park Company that generously donated 30 trees to Wolf Park, which is a park in Ward 2, my ward, and is a park that is well-loved and well-traveled and right by the rec center. So not just neighbors in St. Louis Park, but those that are visiting our water park or our rec center, I get to enjoy those trees as well. And I think it's very fitting. We've had a lot of discussion up here about trees in the past few months, and really honored that we get to accept this donation and think about Speaker Hortman and her husband, Mark Hortman, as we, as they grow and create shade and respite for our community.
Beautifully said. Councilmember? Yes, go ahead, Councilmember.
And I, as I understand it, Mark Hortman was an employee of Envent, and it's just worth recognizing what a great community, community member they are as an organization. So thank you for this donation.
Yes. Yes, thank you, Envent. Moving on to the minutes, we have four minutes listed here. We have special study session meeting of June 16th, 2025, city council meeting of July 7th, 2025, special study session meeting of July 7th, 2025, and lastly but not least, city council meeting minutes of July 21st, 2025. Do I have any amendments, corrections, and/or, yep, go ahead, Councilmember?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I have some corrections to the minutes of July 7th. I will make reference to page 6 there. It says, "Councilmember Budd stated she's in favor of Councilmember Rog's motion noting that sometimes the criteria within the process do not meet importance." And it should say that criteria within the process is so important, it should be codified. So I would like that correction. A couple paragraphs down, it says the motion failed 2 to 4, with the correction being, it said that I was opposed, and actually Commissioner, or Councilmember Broson was opposed. It was a 4-2 vote. And so it was Mayor Mohammed, Councilmembers Bowden, Broson, Ferris opposed, and Councilmember Dumalag was absent.
Yeah.
Those corrections.
Good, go ahead. Councilmember Bowden, just to clarify, this is for the city council meeting minutes on July 7th.
That's correct. Yeah, thanks.
And I think page 6 was when that started, right? Okay. All right, noted. With that, do I have any motions and/or further amendments or corrections?
With that, I'll move approval.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Do I have any further discussion? All right. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? All right, it is, the minutes have approved as amended. And so moving on to the consent items, we have a couple of things on the consent item. I didn't hear any from any councilmembers wanting to pull anything off, but yeah, I'll entertain an motion.
I'd move approval of the consent agenda as presented.
Second.
All right, moved and seconded. Any discussion?
I would like to make, oh.
No, 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 go ahead, Councilmember. Yes.
I'd like to make a comment on item 5E, which is a resolution authorizing submission of a grant application to the League of Minnesota Cities Grant Navigator Program. And that specifically is around our sanitary sewer infrastructure, and I'm highly encouraged to see us taking that step. I think the infrastructure is a piece of the city that it's easy to overlook until something happens. And so we're taking some proactive steps there that will actually work to protect our watershed, and the implications are critical as it relates to watershed. So I wanted to recognize that.
Thank you. Go ahead, Councilmember.
Great. Yep, I just wanted to provide some comments to item G, approve of Rive and Thrive Gateway Plans. So just a thank you to staff and for residents that have participated in the Rive and Thrive Gateway Plan. I know, I believe, Councilmember Budd and I did a walking tour of some areas within Ward 2, and so that was a really great way to go out and meet your neighbors and talk about what you would like to see happen in your own neighborhood. And this has been a long process, you know, and asking for public feedback. There have been a number of open houses around it, and so I really wanted to thank staff for all of that work around the Rive and Thrive Gateway Plans.
All right, thank you. Any others? Go ahead, Councilmember.
Yes, I've got comments on a couple items. First is item 5C, which is, according to our agenda, the resolution providing for the sale of $850,000 in general obligation utility revenue bond, Series 2025A. I see the proposed resolution is before us, and it looks like the original aggregate principal amount of the borrowing is actually $915,000. So I'd like to correct the record for that. It's good to see that our AAA bond rating did us well again, and we ended up with an effective effective or true interest rate of 3.288% on this borrowing we're doing to pay for and stretch out the payments a little bit on necessary utility work. So well done by finance staff and our bond counsel, as always. That's nice. The other thing I'd like to do is compliment our finance staff for the city disbursements. I went through them thoroughly, as always. I noted that Amanda Scott-Lerdahl had a $1.47 disbursement on there, which makes me realize the thoroughness with which we balance the books here when we're doing the city disbursements. And I appreciate that. So thank you very much for that hard work.
I think finance team would definitely love to hear that. Any others? Okay. All right, seeing no further discussion, I will now move on to the votes. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? All right, the consent agenda is approved. We have one public hearing, and we have a public hearing on a new liquor license for the Westside Wine and Bar Cheese Market. Amanda, you have the floor.
Thank you. Good evening, mayor, members of the council. I am Amanda Scott-Lerdahl, Deputy City Clerk for the City of St. Louis Park. This public hearing relates to an on-sale wine liquor license and an on-sale 3.2 malt liquor license for TMS Bravo LLC, doing business as Westside Wine Bar and Cheese Market. The city has received an application from TMS Bravo LLC for these licenses for the property located at 8020 Minnetonka Boulevard. This business and property is next door to and separated from Westside Wine and Spirits, which is at 8016 Minnetonka Boulevard, for which the applicant holds a current off-sale intoxicating liquor license under a separate business. The Westside Market has been open as a market at this location since 2022, with fresh-made sandwiches to deli meats, cheeses, sauces, and seasonings, and they are now applying for alcoholic beverages to be added to their service menu. The premises will consist of approximately 786 square feet with indoor-only seating capacity for 26. The owner of Westside Wine Bar and Cheese Market is Tom Schoenberger, who will also serve as the onsite manager. The police department has run a full background investigation, and nothing was discovered that would warrant denial of the license. The application also meets the requirements of the zoning and building divisions. Mr. Schoenberger and his wife Alex are present this evening if the council has any questions for them. You are asked this evening to first open the public hearing, take public testimony, and close the public hearing, and then consider a motion to approve the application from TMS Bravo LLC. I will stand for questions. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Amanda. Any questions? Does anyone have any clarifying questions? Seeing that this is a public hearing, I will, I haven't received any blue cards, but that does not mean that you can't speak on this item. I will now officially open the public hearing. Please come on up if you would like to say a couple of words regarding this. Going once, twice, sold to no one. All right, we'll close the public hearing. Does council have any other questions, comments they would like to make on this? I believe we are taking a vote on this today, so I will entertain a motion.
Move approval?
All right. All right, moved and seconded. Any, any further discussion? Okay. All right, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? All right, this item is approved. Thank you so much, Amanda. All right, moving on to the regular business, which there are none, we'll move on to the communications and announcements. Kim, do you have any fun communications or announcements for us?
I sure do. Tomorrow night is National Night Out. Encourage everyone to go out and enjoy the evening with friends and family, their neighbors. Here in St. Louis Park, we have more than 130 gatherings that are on the books for this year, which is fantastic. There is an interactive map on the website, so you can go and see exactly which commute, or which blocks have registered and what hours they will be operating. So head on out, do that, and have a great night. Thanks.
All right. Any others? We always have a fun, friendly competition here to see who gets to the most parties. And I believe Sue always beats us by a mile. I think Sue always gets to the most ones, so we shall see. Anyways, any communication announcements, any sports stuff? You usually make all those sports.
Just pray for Fee.
I don't know who that is, but sure, we'll pray for them.
I do, too.
Her? Okay, oh, yeah. Yeah, we'll pray for her. Any others? All right, I feel like I have a communication, but I don't, I can't think of it, so guess must not be important. All right, seeing that there are nothing else, this meeting is adjourned. Thank you so much for joining us.